This meeting is called to order. Karen Tepley will lead the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Karen. Mr. Joyce will need a roll call to determine if we have a quorum.
Alderperson, fruit? Tepley?
Here.
McCarthy?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Melby?
Here.
Downs?
Aye.
Here.
Karens?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, was this meeting properly noted?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes once the council has had a moment to review those minutes or entertain a motion to approve.
And you do have two sets of minutes in your packet to consider this evening? One from the Fourth of April and the other from the Eighteenth of April.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April Fourth and April Eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. Any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Next is approval of the agenda, items eight and nine, Finance Committee back renditions, Financial Services, and Approval of Waits and Measures Inspection Memo Agreement are renewed tonight. If there are any other amendments, please let me know. Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion from Ms. Walters, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the agenda? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving tonight's amended agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, the agenda is approved. Okay, next up is an informational presentation. We have more faces than usual tonight, I'll bet this is why. Welcome, everyone, from the Richland County Treatment Court Team. And we'll mediate the microphone over. And what I'll ask, please, is when you speak, just stand and introduce yourselves, and the folks up here won't know everyone, if we could do that.
Because they have a PowerPoint presentation. Yeah, where do you want these to be?
Um, if you just stand probably there adjacent to the screen, and then Jason can give you the mouse there, it's quite better.
Okay, so I am Lisa McDibble, I'm your fairly new certi- court judge, we're rounding the bend to one year here, so I haven't met you, she wants to meet you all. I am here on behalf of the Richland County Treatment Court and Treatment Court Team, and I have some of the members here with me. So I've got, to my left here, I've got Brandy Christensen, she is our Treatment Court Coordinator. She's a fabulous coordinator. She keeps us all organized, she keeps our participants organized and accountable, and she is also a therapist, she works over at the Health Services Building, and she is employed full-time as our Treatment Court Coordinator. To her left is Jeff Erickson, he is our public defender, he's a staff attorney for the state public defender. His office is in Lancaster, he also manages that office, but his primary county is Richland County. We're glad to have him with us. Seated next to him is Andrea Fields, she is our Richland County Victim Witness Coordinator Supervisor, and she's been in the county for a very long time. She works in the DA's office, and her influence on representation on Treatment Court is extraordinary. Under left is probably a face that's very familiar to you, Detective Jason McCullough, he's one of our law enforcement representatives. We also have a representative from the Sheriff's Department, Toby Johnson, he's not with us tonight. And to his left is Amber Ferguson, she works for Pine Counseling. She primarily, for us anyway, runs the intensive outpatient program, sometimes we put some of our folks into that program, that's a very intensive type of counseling, that's usually three or four days a week, or three or four hours, three hours. And that just depends on what kind of dosage someone might need, dosage of treatments someone might need, whether or not we put them in there. She does other counseling for Pine Counseling as well. So this is Drug of Court Awareness Month, and that's why we're here talking to you, and I promise I will keep this very brief. But we really appreciate the opportunity that you gave us a quick minute to just offer you some information about Treatment Court, because I think people may have heard of what Treatment Court is, but there's not a lot of understanding of exactly what we do. So first, I'll just generally talk about Treatment Courts, and then specifically, we'll talk about our Treatment Court here in Richland County, so that you all have some general idea of what Treatment Court is. So don't get ahead of me now. All right, too? All right. All right, so what is Treatment Court? Treatment Court is a specialized sentencing option for criminal defendants who suffer from addiction, which includes alcoholism. It utilizes a multidisciplinary approach to promote long-term sobriety and recovery in the context of court-ordered accountability. This program achieves success by making our participants accountable and responsible for their own sobriety. Our participants must be put on probation, and they must be sentenced to sobriety or Treatment Court by the judge at sentencing for their crime. Okay, next slide. So why do we have Treatment Courts? Did you know that we have these courts to reduce recidivism? That is, reduce people re-offending. We are honestly trying to grab people who have high risks, that are high-risk for re-offending and have high needs, that can't be just solved out in the community. We also have Treatment Court to save our taxpayers' money by saving jail bed days, by saving prison bed days, by keeping people in the community and solving their problems there. We incarcerate people at phenomenal rates, in the state and in this nation, and if prison isn't going to solve the problem, it's just going to warehouse people. It's good to try to find cost-saving, common-sense solutions in the community. Treatment Courts have been proven to do that, and we're trying to utilize that in our community. We also have Treatment Court to improve public safety, or to improve the quality of life in our community, to keep people safe from crimes so that they don't re-offend, and of course, to improve the individual lives of people who are in Treatment Court and their families, people who suffer, who have families, who have family members that suffer from addiction and alcoholism, of course, can be just miserable, miserable time for folks who have children and siblings who are in throes of addiction and alcoholism. All right, so let's talk about Richland County Treatment Court. I just want to say, first of all, that Brandy put together our PowerPoints, so yay for Brandy. All right, so what about Richland County Treatment Court? I was just thinking about some of the things that we've heard in our Treatment Court from our participants. I recall hearing one of our participants tell us this was the most effective program for achieving sobriety in the community that they've ever experienced. I heard someone else tell us that they believe that they would never have gotten where they kind of, they would never have gotten to the place that they are in life without the support of our program. We recently heard from a participant that they would like us to step up drug testing for them to increase the accountability that they have, because they appreciate what they've seen that do in their lives. And we actually had a participant tell us that they believe that they would likely be dead without the help of this program. All right, next slide. So what is our motion? I will just read this. The mission statement of the Richland County Sobriety Court is to promote present and future community safety by reducing recidivism of criminal offenders who are substance-dependent, by using evidence-based practices. The guiding principle of these Treatment Courts is the belief that every person has value and the power to change their lives and become sober, responsible citizens, thereby improving their lives and the lives of their families and our community as a whole. That is our guiding principle, that is our guiding mission statement. Next slide. So just as a very brief history, we started Sobriety Court in 2017. Judge Sharp started that program. I was on the program at that time, but not as judge, obviously. And we've had a bunch of people come and go on the Treatment Team, some of us have, like Jason and Andrea, they've been with us from the beginning as well. When we first started Sobriety Court, we wanted just to focus on people who had alcohol problems and whose crimes were driven by the use of alcohol. We have had 23 graduates from that program, and there has not been one Sobriety Court graduate that has been rearrested for an alcohol-related crime, so we're very proud of that. In 2022, we started the Drug Court, so now we have a Drug Court and a Sobriety Court, and this is meant to serve Richland County offenders who have drug-related convictions. That we started last year, and as of February, we've had, we have four participants in Drug Court, and we expect to have a lot more very quickly. As many of you know, we have a real problem with methamphetamine in our community, and some of those folks are kind of difficult to deal with, but we're happy to take on that challenge. All right, next slide. So the Treatment Court Team is composed of folks who probably have some familiar names to you. We meet at a minimum of every other week to staff the individual participants' participation in the program. We are fully staffed and updated as to where everybody's at, the kind of progress that they've made, perhaps what kind of violations have occurred in their life. And that those meetings always immediately precede a court hearing where everyone, every single participant comes in, they have to meet with me, and we discuss their progress in a public setting, and we discuss incentives and sanctions to go along with that as they progress through the program. An added benefit to having a wonderful team like this, that is a little more intangible, is the collaboration of all the different stakeholders who regularly come together to solve problems for the benefit of the community, and that sort of gathering is actually invaluable for a lot of different reasons that go beyond just Treatment Court. All right, next slide. So how does it work? So a week in the life of a Treatment Court participant might look something like this. Every single day, they have to call in to see if they have to do a random drug screening. Best practice says that they have to go and test at least two out of every seven days, and it needs to be as random and randomized as possible. Every week, they will meet with Coordinator Brandy to talk about how their life is going and whether or not they're meeting the requirements of the program. They meet with their probation officer and work on whatever programming is required of them there. Every week, they have to go to individual counseling and follow the treatment plan that has been specifically developed for them by their treatment provider. They have to go to a peer support group meeting like NA or AA or some other approved program. They have to go to group counseling, where they are with other individuals, and there's a benefit there that goes beyond individual counseling. And they have to, every other week at least, come to Treatment Court and to have a hearing and to meet with the judge to discuss their progress and their general compliance with the program. And they have to, they are confronted with any failure to comply with their ability to meet the requirements of the program, and we deal with that through sanctions or therapeutic adjustments. And if somebody is just unwilling or unable to comply, in rare instances, they might be expelled from the program. All right, next slide. So in order to be eligible for Treatment Court, someone, as I explained earlier, must be sentenced to Treatment Court as part of a sentence for a criminal offense. Treatment Court is a minimum of 14 months. They must pass through and graduate through five different phases before they can graduate the program. And, let's see, I wonder if I'm behind a slide? No, maybe not. All right, hopefully not. And, of course, as I explained, the program uses incentives and sanctions, and their behavior and their sobriety is carefully and closely monitored. The team, Treatment Court Team, must participate in training, and they must be committed, and we must all be committed to evidence-based best practices that have been proven over time and throughout this nation. There have been many Treatment Courts that have been in operation much, much longer than ours, and a lot of really smart people working on this kind of programming. Okay, next slide. Now, see, I do think I was behind a slide. All right, so there are five phases that folks have to go through, and this recognizes somebody who's in, who has high needs because they are an active addiction or active, they're actively alcoholic. They start in Phase One, and this is all sort of therapy lingo and psychology lingo, and I am neither, so we'd have to ask some of these folks that are smarter than me. But people need to be stabilized. And then, once they've done that, we move them through the phases until they're in a place where they're stable, where they've got a good amount of sobriety under their belt, and then we can graduate them from the program, hoping that they can continue in the community, stable and sober, with a job and with housing and all the things that somebody needs in order to be able to succeed. All right. We are funded by a TAD grant, this is a state grant, TAD stands for Treatment and Diversions. There is a very little actual outlay through the county. There is a 25% cash match, but most of that is in-kind money, and we've actually saved a whole bunch of money, and we've determined that we actually only lay out about less than $15,000 in a year for this program. The grant itself is $173,000. And the savings, the money that is laid out is usually more than made up by savings in jail costs, jail beds, that would otherwise be used to house some of these folks. And of course, there's a better and more, less tangible or countable benefit in terms of public safety, and the benefit to the families of the participants and the participants themselves is actually pretty priceless. And the last educational slide that we have is that our Treatment Court is open to the public. We meet every other Thursday morning. It is a public hearing, like most of the hearings that we have, so we would certainly invite you to come from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. Our next Treatment Court is next Thursday? It's today. Okay, so not this Thursday, but next Thursday, so you would all be very welcome to come. Appreciate you all paying attention, and we wonder if you have any questions for any of us, not just me.
Thank you for the presentation. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I assume all of you know this gentleman to my left.
Me too. She can attest that I do show up to court.
I was just gonna ask, we're paying this guy, you haven't met him. Now, thank you very much. Any questions or comments on the program that we just saw?
Anything, what do you guys want to say?
That was your chance, the microphone's ready? Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda, City Utility Department had reports, any concerns? I will start with Mr. Aaron Jones.
No concerns, sir.
All right, Mr. Jason McGlassbray.
You're gonna pass this evening, thank you.
Okay, you've got it, Aaron Jones.
Yes.
This is a fast agenda. Ashley Olmark.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight, okay. There goes my, uh, Department had concerns, we have here an elderperson. Let's start with Karen Tepley.
Uh, yeah, just a short report from the Tourism Commission that met last, yesterday afternoon. They've been, they've been busy, that's for sure, and my first meeting, so I had to kind of, still kind of getting up to speed there, but the website traffic has greatly improved. They do have like a Google Analytics that they are using for the tourism part of the website, and it's like up 120%, so that certainly needs to be commended, and the, just as a note, the Richland area farmer's market will be moved to the depot area, and that's starting sometime this month. They are looking for volunteers to staff the depot over the summer, so if you're at all interested in volunteering there, you can reach out to Marty Richards. Room tax expansion has happened as well, so there's been one more community added to the room tax list, so that's very good, and of course, the Derrida's Roadway Gereties is obviously going to happen this year.
I believe that's Fordham Township that adopted. That's what Marty told us yesterday, yep, that adopted that. Okay. Okay, Mr. Tom McGlory.
Nothing to say.
Or Chambers.
I think I ought to defer to Mr. Melby.
Okay, we're headed right down there. Melanie Walters.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Kevin Melby.
Uh, I believe our discussion will come later, I don't remember.
Steve Downs.
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Mr. Ryan Karens.
Uh, I have nothing tonight, except that I asked every older person to please speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, too. Okay, Administrator Olfon has handed me a note of reminder. Public informational meeting Phase Two, Cedar Street Utility and Roadway Improvement Project, City of Richland Center City Utilities. The date of that informational meeting will be Thursday, May 11th, at time, 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The location will be right here in City Hall. Now, just, this is short, the City of Richland Center and City Utilities will host a public informational open house to provide information regarding the second phase of the three-phase reconstruction of Seventh Street, Eighth Street, Cedar Street, and Park Street. The reconstruction work includes the construction of new water main, sanitary sewer main, service laterals, storm sewer, concrete curb and gutter, asphalt pavement, and driveway approaches. And the rest of this is just explaining what will be, that there will be a presentation on property owners, any tenants, any neighbors encouraged to attend. Anyone unable to attend may obtain a fat sheet on the city website or by contacting Zachary Adams with MSA Professional Services at 608-355-8946, or zadams, Z-A-D-A-M-S, at M as in Mary, S-A dash P as in Paul, s.com, or the City Utilities Office at 647-3844. Okay, next item on tonight's agenda, Treasurers Report, Mr. Aaron Joyce.
Need the microphone. Go ahead. Thank you. Okay, this is the Treasurers Report for the period ending May 30th, 2023. City General had an ending balance of $629,412. State Pool Number One had an ending balance of $5,034,00102. Let's see, the RLF Business Savings Account just had a little interest, ending balance of $593,309. Others of North Library Checking had an ending balance of $157,876. Room Tax had an ending balance of $29,879. Great Richland Tourism had some activity with an ending balance of $14,620. I will also mention the State Pool Number Four had an ending balance of $1617,259. I will point out one interesting thing on that, we really had no activity in State Pool Number Four, other than that $6,320 income, that's all interest. So what got deposited in April was the March interest. We earned that amount in interest at a rate of 4.62%, which is a lot. By comparison, in March of 2022, our interest rate was 0.16%. So we earned, let's see, about 25 times much in interest with less money in the bank last month in interest than we did a year ago on our State Pool. So that's pretty, pretty awesome.
The hidden upside to rising interest rates.
I guess, yes.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments regarding the Treasurers Report? If there are, if there is no discussion, entertain a motion to approve the Treasurers Report.
Make motion to approve the Treasurers Report.
A motion from Karen Tepley, is there a second?
Second.
I'll give that one to Mr. McCarthy on the close call. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the Treasurers Report? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call, please, Mr. Joyce.
Alderperson, Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Karens?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, Payment of the Bills. While the council reviews those bills, it is my duty to read the following, the bills presented on this day, excluding any library fund invoices having been referred to the Finance and Budget Committee, and said committee having duly investigated and audited these bills, hereby make the following recommendation, that the city bills presented on this day be paid with the following adjustments and/or exceptions. No adjustments or exceptions are listed, it is signed by the members. For the Finance Committee, who, once you had a moment, to review those bills, will entertain a motion to pay them. Will you pay them? Motion from Mr. Steve Downs, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Melanie Walters, any discussion of the bills? Hearing number one, we will have a roll call.
Alderperson, McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Karens?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, item four. Consider repeal and reissue of temporary Class B picnic licenses previously granted to Greater Richland Area Chamber of Commerce for July 21st, August 18th, and September 15th, 2023, to reflect a change in premises from 950 North Orange Street to 397 West Seminary. Entertain a motion to repeal and reissue the temporary Class B picnic licenses to the Greater Richland Area Chamber of Commerce.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Melby, with the motion, is there a second?
I will second.
Mr. Chambers was the second, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of repealing and reissuing the temporary Class B picnic licenses to the to the Greater Richland Area Chamber of Commerce, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed.
And motion is carried. Finance Committee Recommendations and Actions, Melanie, are you taking it?
I am.
Go for it, you're up.
All right. Um, Item Five, accept bid for asphalt overlay. Uh, Tara Nelson, the Street Department Superintendent, uh, put out for bid, um, for their annual allotment of, uh, asphalt. He received back two bids. Uh, one was from Scott Construction at ninety-two dollars and eighty-nine cents per ton. Um, the bid was for, uh, nine hundred tons, which would be a total of eighty-three thousand six oh one. And the other bid was from D L Gasser for ninety-five dollars and seventy cents per ton, which would be eighty-six thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, the Street Department does have a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for this line item. Uh, so my motion would be to approve the bid from Scott Construction for ninety-two dollars and eighty-nine cents per ton, um, for a total of eighty-three thousand six hundred and one dollars.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Walters, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Downs, is there a discussion of this item? Okay, hearing none, we'll have to have a roll call on this one.
Alderperson Chambers.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Tebley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item says establishment of a community resource officer. If you want to introduce that, go ahead, Melanie, otherwise I will.
No, that's fine. Um, so, this item has been discussed at both personnel and finance, um, for looking at working with a joint venture with the Richland School District to establish a community resource officer. Um, at this time, we're kind of doing a back and forth where we're trying to come up with, um, what we should budget for it, if we decide to move it forward. The school district is also trying to figure out what they would budget for it, um, if it was decided to move forward with this. And it's a lot of Billy running back and forth between the two entities. So, uh, at finance, after a very lengthy discussion, we came to the agreement of, it should probably be a, a good idea to schedule a separate meeting between the City Council and the School Board so that we can just sit down and discuss this without Billy being the middleman, running back and forth. So, I don't know, do you want to add anything, Billy?
I do need a little exercise. I don't know that you do, Billy crosses this floor a lot after that microphone every time. Billy, at the, at the Finance Committee, um, several questions were asked and answered, but this time it's recorded, so for the public's benefit, why is there any, what is the need? And could you address, as you did for us, what some of our neighboring school districts have already done?
Um, sure, so, um, so, we, we've had, uh, multiple discussions about a community resource or a school resource officer, um, being, um, entertained and put into place here in the, in the Richland School District, um, in Richland Center. Um, so initially, we had planned to, um, to move a, a officer that's already established in the, in the department, um, into the schools, and not only just the high school, but the intermediate and the primary school, um, based on and for multiple reasons, but the obvious ones of, of security and to help build relationships, uh, between the police department and, and the community, and the students, the students' families, and the, and the faculty. Um, it's not new news that, uh, that traumatic events have happened throughout the, throughout the, the nation, um, at schools, and it's, it's, it's a need, um, unfortunately, but it's a need that I feel is important, um, and responsible to look at, um, the best way to put a police officer in the school. And again, it's not just for the safety, um, even though that's a huge part, but bigger yet, we want to build relationships, um, in our community, we want to make our community better, and what a, a better place to do that than in our schools with our kids, um, before they get into the treatment courts. Okay, so if, if we can do that, it's a win. If we can help one person stay out of the treatment court, it's a win, you know? And, and I strongly believe that, uh, that, that starts with relationships, not only with police officers, but with other people in the community, and building those bridges, no matter where we are or what we do. Um, so that, you know, that's, that's the big back of it. Obviously, there's a financial need, um, which is, which is why we've, we've talked to personnel and finance, and now, and now you. Um, and that's why we're going to continue to talk to the School Board, um, and the committees at, at the School District, um, to hopefully, um, come to some sort of consensus, um, on, on what makes the most sense financially. Um, and, and I understand, we have to ask questions, we've got to ask those hard ones, we've got to figure things out, um, but with everybody's help, um, in the community and, you know, in, 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 uh, in the two of, in the two entities, the school, the School District and the, and the City Council and the City of Richland Center, that we can, we can eventually get there and, uh, and, and work things, work, work things out. Um, as, as the mayor mentioned, uh, we are, we are the only school district, uh, the only police department, the only city, um, in our conference, um, that, that we belong to, um, as a school district, that does not have either a full-time or a part-time, um, school resource, community resource officer, um, already established. We're not far behind many, but we are the last one to, to attempt and hopefully implement this, this program in our schools. Um, you know, not only would this be a, be a, a huge entity at the high school level, but, um, at the intermediate level, we already teach, uh, counteract, um, in, in the schools where we, where we educate the kids, um, about destructive decisions, um, making bad choices, um, alcohol, drug influences, uh, things of that nature. And as, as you have all seen, and you have all been just a, a great partner in, in building an anti-drug, um, type of, type of concept in our city, um, it's just another step, just another step that we can, that we can help out and continue to do. Um, you know, River Valley has a part-time officer, Dodgeville has a part-time, Lancaster has a part-time, um, Platteville has two full-time, um, school resource officers, Prudishin has, has a new program. Um, and, and it's just, it's not like, you know, I feel like I, I don't have all the toys that they got, so to speak. It's just, it's, it just shows that there is a need. And, and each city, each community, uh, does, does what they do best, and that's improve. Improve and improve and improve, and then that's where I'm hoping we go to, and, and we continue to do.
Right, so, just a couple of things we talked about, and Finance, again, um, I asked you, Billy, if you felt that it might be possible for Richland Center to have a part-time officer, or perhaps to assign one of our existing officers part of their time to the high school. How do you feel about that?
Um, well, anything is possible, right? Um, however, I, I feel the amount of, the amount of calls that we currently staff, um, and with the current staffing of the Police Department, I don't, I don't believe it's fair, um, to the officers or to the community to, to put that much on one person. Um, when, when we take an officer out on the street to put him in the schools, which we do now, um, just on call basis, um, we, we, we usually run short, you know, in other places where we, we need to, you know, provide services to the public in, in other, in other ways or for other reasons. Um, a lot of the times, you know, I come out of the office to go assist, um, and answer calls. Um, not that I can't do that, and I'm able to do that, my schedule usually is flexible, so to do that. Um, however, it's not the most adequate way to handle, to handle those kinds of things. Uh, Detective Phil, who is here, uh, a lot of the times, he has to leave an investigation or stop an investigation, go out and assist. Um, a lot of the times, because of the nature of the calls that are at the school districts, um, they take time. They take time, we're not dealing with, we're not dealing with, you know, a, a drug arrest or a, a drunk, we're dealing with kids. You know, we're, you know, it, it takes time, it takes time, you've got to handle them differently. Um, and it takes a unique person to handle those kind of calls. Uh, it's not for everybody, and, you know, and my officers or the officers that worked at the Police Department, they do a wonderful job, but, that, you know, a lot of them have other focuses. Um, not that they can't adapt, and they do, and we ask a lot of them. Um, but to answer your question, it's, it's, it's not fair to everybody to ask one person to do all of that.
Would you say, in recent years, police activity in the area has been growing or not growing?
I would, I would unfortunately have to say it's been, it's been growing.
Yeah, so, so we're reaching a point where you might need an additional officer regardless?
At some point in time, I mean, the, the city's growing, you know, we're doing a weekend as a city to, to make growth happen. Um, and with that, unfortunately comes crime. Um, and the more people you put in the city, the more problems that you tend to have. Um, I think we do have a job, you know, with that, however, uh, reality is, is, you know, the types of calls seem to be getting bigger, um, unfortunately, and, and the time that it takes to handle some of those calls, um, has also increased.
So, what was, thank you, Billy, and first of all, does anyone on the council have any questions or comments for Billy? Okay, and what, um, what was decided at Finance was, um, in recent months, some similar issues came up in those cases with the city and the county. Some discussions needed to be had on how some things would be funded going forward. Um, economic development, assignment center, things that were jointly funded by the city and the county. In this case, this officer will be jointly funded by the city and the school district. So what's going to happen is we'll be contacting the school district to arrange a similar meeting that will have representatives from the city and from the schools there, basically to hash through responsibilities of the officer, who's paying what at what time, and get this all, um, straightened out so that both the School Board and the City Council can make effective decisions on this. I don't think anybody representing the city or the schools fails to see the need, and that does not make me happy. But we can't be naive. So we'll, we'll pursue this, and if we come up with a workable solution, we'll go from there. Okay, anything else on this item? All right, uh, then moves us to, uh, we have number seven left, uh, for Melanie.
All right, Item Seven, uh, replacement of AED devices. Um, so there are, um, AED devices throughout the different city departments. Six of them are coming to end of life. Uh, and when I say end of life, I mean we can't buy parts, there's no support for them, nothing anymore. So we have to look at, um, upgrading, um, and getting brand-new ones. Um, the request came through actually for seven, because it was identified that, um, one of the departments actually had, uh, less AEDs than the others, so to kind of be consistent and make sure that all departments had kind of, um, the equal amount of AEDs available to them. Uh, the request is for seven. Uh, three quotes were obtained, uh, the lowest price was from, uh, Cardio Partners for a total of eleven thousand five hundred eleven dollars and fifty cents, uh, plus freight costs. Unfortunately, uh, we did not know during the budget cycles, uh, that these were not repairable or we wouldn't be able to get replacement parts for them anymore. So, uh, the request is, was made about potentially using ARPA funds. Um, Administrator Olafant did look, you know, we, the city still does have, uh, ARPA funds available to us, so, uh, we discussed it at Finance and felt that this would be an appropriate use of some of these funds. So my motion would be, um, to purchase seven AED devices, um, from Cardio Partners for the cost of eleven thousand five hundred, sorry, eleven thousand five hundred eleven dollars and fifty cents plus freight costs, um, and utilize ARPA funds for the purchase.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Walters, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Tebley, any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call, please.
Alderperson Walters.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Downs.
Aye.
Cairns.
Aye.
Tebley.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Chambers.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, Item Ten.
So, Item Ten, consider purchase of Badger Books Electronic Poll Book. Um, because of time management, uh, we, at Finance, decided to just defer this to the entire council to discuss, so with the very first presentation of this for all of us, I will turn it over to Mr. Aaron Joyce.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so this is quite exciting. Um, very exciting. Um, similar to, uh, the Community Resource Officer, there are several other communities throughout our area that are, uh, using Badger Books. Uh, it is an electronic version of the poll book, like when you go to vote, and you go to the, sign your name on the poll book, and you're issuing your ticket. Um, this is an electronic version of that, and, uh, it does several things, uh, it streamlines the process. Uh, what it will do for voters, uh, it'll change what voters see when they go to the polls here in Richland Center. Right now, you go to the polls, there's four different districts that somebody could go to and vote. You go to your specific ward, you sign the poll book that's there, you get your number, you get your ballot, and then you go to vote. Uh, what this would do would be to streamline everything onto, uh, uh, units where you can sign your name, uh, electronically. You would go to really any of the terminals that are available, um, at the polling place. You would no longer go to your specific ward, uh, which will be a drastic change for a lot of people, but it will help eliminate, eliminate a lot of confusion for folks that don't know where you go. So, um, I think what we'll do right now is I'll have Jason play this video. You know, they say pictures worth a thousand words, so we'll, uh, kind of show, this is the video that the state put out regarding the Badger Books, so it might give you a little better, better idea and visual of what I'm talking about.
I don't know what's going to happen with volume.
Buttons on the side, Jason. On the side of the room, hold on.
It's muted.
It's muted.
Is he muted, did I mute it?
Yes.
Yes, you did. Come on.
Yes, it's the Wisconsin Electronic Poll Book. Electronic, yes.
I don't know, uh, you mean we're replacing the poll book now with tablets? Well, why does somebody hack it?
That's a valid concern, but I assure you, that's not possible.
I don't know, I don't know. The internet needs it, you gotta admit, anything's possible.
Well, actually, the Badger Books are not connected to the internet.
Oh, really?
Yes. Well, what was the matter with the paper poll books? Those were working just fine as far as I could tell. Well, this is just the electronic version of that paper poll book. The data on the Badger Book is the same data found on the poll book, which is the only data that's necessary to check in voters. Badger Books are helpful tools for voter checking and registration following the official process. When you check in, you still need to state your name and address, show your photo ID, and sign to get your ballot, just like the paper poll book. The difference is that this process is faster on a Badger Book. And if you happen to be in the wrong polling place, the election inspector will get the address of your correct polling location from the Badger Book. If you need to register to vote on election day, it is also the same process as before. You still need to state your name and address, show your proof of residence, and sign your name at the end. When you complete registration, you can check in to vote at the same station. And if you bring your Wisconsin driver license or state ID, the poll worker can scan it and input the relevant information on it to Badger Book, which reduces errors from handwriting. After election day, Badger Books efficiency allows your voter participation to appear sooner on myvote.wi.com website. But I'm terrible with technology.
You don't have to be good with technology to use a Badger Book. It's not a self-check-in like you might see at the doctor's office, same as a paper poll book. Only time you'll have to use it directly is when you sign it, or it goes across. Well, that's great, but how do you keep the data on a Badger Book secure? Well, that's great, but how do you keep the data on a Badger Book secure? The Badger Book is not connected to the internet, so hackers have no way of obtaining the data. Your municipal clerk has to be granted full access to the system after extensive training and must use multi-factor authentication every time they log in. Badger Books have many functions, but there are still things in the voting place you won't be doing on them. For example, voting itself doesn't happen on a Badger Book. You'd still do that as you usually do. Also, you won't have to join a line based on your name or ward when you get there, and you won't be able to get your sticker from a Badger Book. Just remember these three things. One, Badger Books are not connected to the internet and you must sign in order to receive your ballot. Two, your personally identifiable information is not listed, just like a paper book. The election inspector only sees your name, address, and voter registration number. Three, please be patient and kind to the election inspectors as this may be their first election using Badger Books. They don't interact with the machines every day, so they may take their time to get everything right for you. Thank you for taking the time to learn more about Badger Books and how you will interact with them at your voting place on election day. If you have additional questions about Badger Books, please ask your municipal clerk.
So that's kind of a quick and dirty visual of kind of what we're hoping to obtain. Some of the things that make it an attractive thing for us is it will help lower the number of poll workers that we will be needing on election day. We've had a lot of poll workers who have retired because of COVID. We've had a number of poll workers who are requesting partial days, and it's become more difficult to, you know, get poll workers to commit full days, so, you know, this will help lessen some of that burden. Also, the post-election reporting, you know, it says it's not connected to the internet, but there is just a thumb drive at the end of the night, you know, get into the server, get the data from that, and then I can upload that into our election systems called WISVOTE, and that will save a tremendous amount of time because after every election, when we record participation, we have to literally click every person who came and voted, you know, they signed the poll book and they got their number, we have to go in and click every person that voted manually. Last election in April, we had over 1,200 voters, that's 1,200 clicks, and that's a lot of time spent, and with this, it will help reduce that by quite a bit. I think one of the cool things with the information in front of you, and one of the things that I have been really encouraged by most is I did reach out to some other clerks that do utilize Badger Books, and I got responses from clerks in Lancaster, Toma, Lake Delton, and Reesburg, and I promise that none of them communicated with one another, and I just asked a series of questions, and I got a lot of similar answers from them. I asked to briefly describe your experience with Badger Books, and some of the responses, they have improved efficiency and accuracy for our elections, we love them, it's been the best thing to happen to our election. Somebody else said, they are amazing, Badger Books are worth every penny, I love them so much. I think I'm losing juice here. Another clerk said I've become a huge advocate for getting them. I asked, have you saved time in the post-election reporting and reconciliation process? How long did it take you to reconcile just this past April 4th election? One clerk said Badger Books are a time saver post-election, it takes about 15 minutes to save the poll book data from the Badger Book and upload to WISVOTE. It took me about 10 hours to do that this past election. Another clerk said we save lots of time on the back end. Another said it's insane how much time I save on the post-election reporting and reconciliation. One clerk said I spent about 30 minutes if that was silent. Let's see. I asked if there are any additional costs following the initial purchase and implementation. One said no additional costs so far, one flat-out said no, a couple others looked at potentially getting some other, like, storage containers, and one said that their cord for their mouse is connected, and their keyboard is connected, and they just wanted a longer cord, so that's what they bought. I said, do the poll workers like the Badger Books? Yes. Some of them say it saves time and reduces error. My poll workers love Badger Books, capital love. The others say they love them. And then I said, were you able to cut the number of poll workers employed on election day? All four that responded said yes, so.
There are not many hours is that day before a voluntary election?
7:00 AM to, well, polls close at 8:00 PM, but by the time you're out of there, you're talking 8:00 AM clock.
7:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Yep.
You say it's hard to get people to do that these days. Somehow I believe that.
And I love our poll workers, the demographic of our poll workers is folks that can take a whole day off and stay all day, so.
Okay, questions or comments for Mr. Joyce?
Mr. Joyce, if I recall correctly, a few years ago, you and I worked together to find some youth to help out with relieving some of those poll workers, and it seemed to work out, except that it was one time. The likelihood of that happening again in numbers that would sustain what you need for poll workers from a 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM time period, likely or unlikely?
Unlikely.
I thought so.
I would also say that when we did that project, we were also hand-counting paper ballots. We moved away from that to the tabulator now, so even that process has been streamlined.
Right.
So. In your packet, the cost for the units that we're looking at is a total of $8,540.95. That includes the four units, the four-year extended service agreement, and online support, receipt paper and the peripherals that are connected by cord. The, one of the kind of fun, interesting things is that if something happened on election day, one of the technicians involved in Badger Books lives in Richland Center, so he has told me that he could be here in a couple minutes, so that is quite handy and attractive in and of itself. So the funding source, right now in State Pool Number Four, there is, there are funds designated for election equipment totaling $8,125.69. The remaining would come from unallocated, I wrote contingency, excuse me, unallocated interest in State Pool Number Four. So that would be my request, if I so desire.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion on that.
I will make a motion to approve the purchase of Badger Books' election equipment. Total cost, $8,540.95. $8,125.69 will come from State Pool Four, the election equipment allocation, and the remaining $415.26 will come from the unallocated interest in State Pool Four.
Can we have the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, there's a second, any discussion on this item?
Just one question there. You had mentioned that there were 21 poll workers previously, and you said this would be a reduction. Do you roughly know, are we talking four people, or are we talking?
I think I would start with reducing it by four, and then kind of see how it flows. I mean, we could potentially reduce it by more than that. Right now, in each, if you go to the polls, there's one person on each book in each ward, so that's 12 people just there, and then you've got the chief inspector behind them assisting as well. So we're gonna narrow that down to four of these units, so that's quite a reduction there, but we'd also need people to distribute ballots and work the tabulators, and we've got greeters that have been very helpful in recent past, so those positions would still exist. So, yeah, I think at least four to start, and with the definite possibility of more.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question about the security of the vote. Is there any possibility that votes could be changed, lost, or added that should not be?
This would not have anything to do with the votes themselves, you would still vote on the paper ballot, that's the card that would go through the tabulator, so that record would always exist. These would have nothing to do with the actual vote tally themselves. This is just a participation, registration.
It's a standalone.
Yeah, it's a standalone unit that has nothing to do with the tally of the votes itself.
One of the things that comes up, that has come up in other places, is that people vote other people's ballot early, either usually by mail, and then the, when the voter actually shows up at the poll to vote, the poll book shows that they've already voted. What is the security that would prevent that from happening?
We've, since I've been employed by the city, that's never happened. That's just not the thing that's occurred here in the city.
No, but Aaron, you, I mean, I know we've gone through some things, like you reported as potential fraud, and essentially alert elections officials.
Right, that would rise to the level of notifying the district attorney if there was someone voting for someone else in someone else's name, that would rise to criminal offense.
Clearly, but what would, what would be the possibility if someone does show up at the poll and finds that their vote has already been voted for a, like a provisional vote or something that would, you know, how can they vote and have their vote counted if the crook that voted them, that voted their ballot is caught or at least identified?
Or even a less nefarious example would be what if somebody had voted absentee and then they wanted to change their vote, maybe on election day? So we have a vote already cast, and then election day comes and they want to vote again.
If you vote absentee, you cannot change your vote once election day comes.
May I ask if Mr. Downs' question is obviously an important one? You know, security and confidence in the vote, may I ask how that question pertains to whether or not we purchase Badger Books' electronic poll book? Wouldn't any potential issues with the vote exist with or without it?
No.
I mean, if it could happen, if it's nothing to do with this product?
That's correct.
It would change anything from where it is now to where it would be then, in terms of vote security?
That's correct.
So that's not an invalid question, Steve, but it really doesn't pertain to whether or not the agenda item, which is consider purchase of Badger Books' electronic poll book, happens or does not. So we, anything else on this point? Okay, and we have the motion and the second, we'll need a roll call.
I don't know if you're asking Steve specifically, so I do have one question. Does this have the ability to make the voter rolls more precise or like, or not?
It does.
Does it? Well, that's cool. I mean, I think that's a benefit.
It does.
Okay, thank you.
I think data quality will definitely not go, won't backslide with this, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we'll need a roll call.
Alderperson Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Karens?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you all very much.
Okay, item 11, resolution merging Public Works and Property Committees. Before I read that resolution, this has come, I guess, I'm gonna, Ashley, I'm gonna have you touch on this just briefly, the need to merge the two committees, and then I'll read the resolution and we'll move forward. Whatever information you want to share.
Okay. So we have been discussing for quite some time at Personnel with department heads, all around the potential for Public Works and some of the duties that fall under the Parks and Grounds Departments perhaps merge under one umbrella. There's a lot of relation and relationship between the two, and there's the potential for more efficiency if we were to move towards that direction. Given the Property Committee and Public Works often will traverse the same subject matter, it seemed only appropriate for everyone's time to merge the two committees together. So the same individuals have been appointed to both committees, but at this time, looking to merge the committees together and all of the subject matter discussed under each would be then combined by doing so.
Okay, before we proceed, any questions or comments on that point from the council? Okay, and quickly, I'm gonna read this, and then we'll move forward. Proposed Resolution, Resolution approving merger of Property Committee and Public Works. Whereas the City of Richland Center believes for the purposes of efficiency, ease of communication, and consistency, the standing committees of Public Works and Property should be merged into one committee, whereas to accomplish such, the Property Committee shall cease to operate as a separate standing committee, and the subject matter and authority of said committee shall be transferred to the authority of the Public Works Committee. Now therefore be it resolved, the common council of the City of Richland Center adopts the following, adopts this resolution? Okay, so at this point, entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Ms. Tepley, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a second from Mr. Downs, any discussion? Hearing done, let's have a roll call, please.
Alderperson Downs?
Aye.
Karens?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Motion carries, that is Resolution 2023-2.
-2. Okay, Mr. McGowan, just point of clarification, this is drafted for signature from Mr. Joyce, I believe the mayor signs resolutions, I always have, is that correct?
Sure.
Thank you, we'll just amend it and I'll sign it, no big deal.
That was my charge.
You just did. It's not a big deal, we'll just amend it and I'll sign it. Thank you, DA McGowan. All right, appointments, the committees, commissions, boards, confirm appointments, none tonight, but I expect them at our next meeting, I'll touch on that after the meeting with those involved. Public comment, no council action will be taken on any matter originating under this item. I've not been made aware of anyone who wishes to invest the council tonight, is there anyone who would like to do so? Okay, moving on, item 12, closed sessions. Interim Estates Development and Senate 12A, the chair may entertain a motion to enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 1985-1E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. All in favor of going to close the session, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we are now in closed session.